Okay, I call this meeting to order at seven oh two P M. March eighteenth, twenty twenty four. First, I'm gonna call to order and do the roll call. I am present. My name Luke Maruziak. Vice Chair Tesman?
Present.
And we know Commissioner Aleth is excused, absent. I don't see Commissioner Kilcup. Commissioner Crone is excused, absent. Commissioner Lambert?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Okay, and you said that Commissioner Kilcup will eventually join? Okay, I'll tell you what, let's get on with some of the particulars while we wait for it to come in there. So first, a public comment will be accepted by in-person attendees. Remote attendees may submit written comments. Are there any public comments for items not on the agenda? Seeing nobody here in chambers. So that is no. Um, do we have a council member for the liaison report? Okay. Uh, so I tell you what, um, I move that we approve the agenda without the council liaison report since, uh, Councilmember Johnson is absent. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
If motion carries. Next is the amendments approval of minutes stated February twentieth, twenty twenty four. A move we approve those minutes as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote?
Aye.
Well, minutes are approved in February twenty 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 four. Move on to the start.
I know, I think it's point of order, but can we approve minutes without a quorum?
We have a quorum.
Okay.
Yeah.
Four, yeah.
Four, yeah, yeah. Yeah, but the answer to the question is no, we could not. I mean, so I had to wait for Commissioner Smith. Hopefully Commissioner Yeah, it looks like Commissioner Kilcup is in, coming in. Can you promote her? All right. Mr. Kilcup?
Good evening.
Hello, okay. You are marked as present. So, um, we just, uh, approved the agenda. We amended it and removed the council liaison report as council member Johnson is not present, and then we approved the minutes stated February twentieth, twenty twenty four. So we, we didn't get into the meat of anything yet. So at this point, I'd like to move on to agenda item number two, the environmental element. Maybe the podium way over there.
Guess they decided to do a bit of redecorating.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm waiting for the PowerPoint to launch.
Okay. We're waiting, give, oh, never mind. Hit that later. Go ahead.
Alrighty, so if you look at the memo prepared, these proposed policies will be in there. These are our interpretations based on what the Department of Fish and Wildlife provided. So they provided additional comments after we had already gone through the process of approving the environment element.
Yeah, let me, let me just highlight that because I had a couple of conversations before it sank in. I'm sure it just sank in everybody. So we went all the way through the environmental policy. We were about ready to summarize and present it.
Mm-hmm.
And it turns out that the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife added some detail that we're not in, not available at the time that we had considered everything.
Correct.
So that is going to be the added details, what you're going to cover now.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure everybody was on board with what we're doing here. Okay.
Yes, so, uh, what you'll see listed here is the added detail in the um, memo itself, we go over a slight overview of what the, um, like the overarching idea of what is presented. Um, here, one second, let me. Um, so in the memo, you'll see that there's a slight overview of the comments if you, um, had an opportunity to look at it. Um, there were some comments that we felt didn't necessarily fully suit Snoqualmie, and so we added our interpretation while also taking their best guidance as someone that has a lot of authority on environmental policy.
Okay, so consideration of high wildlife movement. Culvert upgrades utility crossings. Repairian management zones instead of stream buffers.
Yeah, so that's an update in language. They're trying to acknowledge that there's more, um, like wildlife and it's its own ecosystem outside of just being uh, an abutment to a stream.
Okay, are you gonna cover these in detail?
Uh, there isn't much detail to add outside of these are the drafts that we have.
Okay, could you define the difference between repair and management zone and a stream buffer? I don't, I'm not sure I'm clear on that.
Chair Emily Ortecci, Community Development Director, I, I can provide you, um, I have to go back and take a look at the definitions, but in what's happening here is that the state of Washington has asked that all cities update their critical area ordinances. It's a work program item for the planning commission to do in the upcoming years, and we're actually going to be able to start on it this year, probably finish up next year, but some of the terminology under best available science that is used to help inform the critical areas update has now changed where we would have seen stream buffers. Now we're seeing repair and buffers. It's, um, a broader, more enriching way of considering what happens on either side of the stream. And so that's why you see some of these, um, terminology, this terminology changing a little bit and altering from what we've become familiar with in the past.
Is the goal to though prevent erosion or to enable natural erosion? I mean, uh, I, I thought the stream buffer was to prevent erosion. Uh, I just want to understand what repairian means, so.
Uh, repairian refers to the stream. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a more enriched term. Let me go back and see if I can pull it, so.
I, I just don't know what it means, that's why I'm asking, okay.
Sure.
Okay.
So, um, an additional one that they would like to see is consider areas of high wildlife movement and mortality and the needs of all roadway users when designing and building neighborhood traffic safety projects. Um, what comes to mind with this one is, um, especially when you head more down towards Meadow Brook, all the elk crossings and everything.
Yes, I, I've, uh, I've had them surprise me as well when I was driving that road, yes. You know, and I've seen a deer hitting on the parkway. I've actually seen a couple be hitting the parkway.
Um, and another one that they recommended adding was coordinate with Washdaw, King County, and neighboring jurisdictions to plan and prioritize culver upgrades and utility crossings to ensure fish passage burial removal, adequate projected stormwater passage, and continued climate-related adaptations to handle water passage into the future throughout Snoqualmie, especially where terrestrial species connectivity can be restored simultaneously.
That's a, that's a big one. As opposed to a non-terrestrial species? Okay, I, I think I get what they're going with it, yeah, just, uh, is, is somebody is using a weird dictionary to use that phrase, but okay.
I have the definition of repairian if you would like to hear it.
Sure.
Um, repairian areas contain elements of aquatic and terrestrial ecosystems. The interactions between water and land create an environment that is critical to the survival and existence of land-based and aquatic species. Known for their moist and mild microclimates, repairian areas have fertile soils that enhance plant growth and support complex food webs. Repairian areas are a critical resource as they directly benefit numerous wildlife species, including many that we in Washington cherish. Um, so it's it's not diminishing the protection of stream buffers. It's more of like an integrated view of.
Do it in a way that protects the fish and wildlife.
Yeah.
I, I think I get it.
More, more of a wholesale.
Okay, I just don't understand using terrestrial. I mean, everybody saw the movie E T, Extraterrestrial. I mean, so that means it's.
Terrestrial just means land.
Well, yeah, but I mean, I'm just amazed they would use that word, but okay. Okay, keep rolling.
Um, the third one is an alteration to a previous, uh, goal and policy that was discussed. Um, so the altered one says restore and maintain previously disturbed wetlands and repairian management zones and their buffers where feasible, using the correct mitigation sequencing for optimal ecosystem services.
Okay.
Um, they had these together and we decided to separate them. So we said, ensure minimal adverse impacts and no net loss of ecological values and functions occur. Oh, I should say in repairian management zones.
Hmm, okay.
And the next one, they essentially liked what we said, but they wanted us to add the best available science aspect. So it says protect properties and ecological functions in the flood plain with development regulations guided by standards established by FEMA, the Department of Ecology, and best available science that incorporates climate change projections.
Because the Department of Ecology and FEMA would not use best available science? That's so, that's so weird. Okay, that's, that's fine, I guess. Okay.
And the last one says, support the implementation of the city's hazard mitigation plan to reduce risks associated with floods, erosion, damages to property owners, and other observed hazards and improved development, right, regulations.
Hmm, okay. Okay, what is the what is our purview with this stuff? We're basically being asked to put it in our environmental plan for our conflict, right?
Correct.
Is beyond definitions, it appears that there are grandfather statements. Like scroll up a bit, like the best of science, but they, yeah. Minimal adverse impacts, no net loss of ecological values. I mean, and functions occur repairian. Now, that could be very benign, or that could be a, hey, you know, we suddenly discovered, um, we'd like to uh, reintroduce tadpoles because they used to be there. Um, you know, let's do something very different. So I'm just a bit concerned at some of these you know, very broad, you know, kind of loosely defined statements. Uh, because I think we had it pretty well bracketed. No, it's, it's just interesting, some of this language here. And then after we say we're gonna listen to FEMA, listen to the Department of Ecology, which I assume they're pretty smart folks, now we're gonna add the best available science. Uh, again, I'm like, okay, and, and that's capitalized. So does that mean FEMA and Department of Ecology, there's something else who may determine? And who would determine the fish and wildlife? It's, it's for them to determine best available science?
Best available science is kind of an overarching term. Um, sorry, I'm trying to think of a way to describe it. It's not acting out of line of what the Department of Ecology and FEMA recommend. It's an additional layer of consideration for, um, like for a project per se, um, where potentially like you could go into more detail with different scientific aspects.
Right, I, I used to be in heavy execution mode in industry. And we used to have to be very careful about defining what it is we're trying to do. And if you didn't, if there were room in there, you could get scope creep all over the place. And that's, I guess, what I'm concerned about is, um, as we go through this, um, there certainly seems to be um, words in here that will allow, even though that was okay for twenty twenty five, my twenty twenty seven would like this in addition to that, this in addition to that. And maybe that's the intent, but at any rate, that's, that's kind of how I'm reading this. Go ahead.
Chair Emily Ortecci, Community Development Director, these are just recommendations, you know, this is really up to, um, you know, the planning commissioners to decide, you know, if, if they, if they'd like to include these in the environmental element um, as a revised recommendation or not. Um, and some of the terminology, um, is difficult to understand because it is shifting and changing and um, I think some of the thought, well, I know some of the thought of the Fish and Wildlife, Department of Fish and Wildlife was that could we align more terminology that you will see coming forward when we start working on best, best available science and critical areas update? You know, could, could we foresee the goals and policies, you know, with, with terminology that would support the new update? I mean, hopefully that makes sense.
Well, it does, although I do know that there's been a lot of investment up and down the Snoqualmie River, for instance, um, for return of the salmon and things like that, and, um, is that going to be then deemed not adequate because of some new evaluation or new, uh, I mean, it, it sounds like it's, it's just gonna be, it's gonna be up to whatever is determined best available science at whatever point in time they decide to check it out.
I, uh, we haven't started working on critical areas update, but likely when we get into the code and revising the code, you'll start to see repairian areas, repairian zones called out and, and, and stream buffers not used anymore.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I mean, that seems like a definitional thing we could get past. Um, okay, I'll tell you what, I've spoken a bit. Let me, let me poll the commissioners and just see what their thoughts are. Um, Vice Chair Tesman?
Yeah, I, I mean, obviously it's great to be as precise as possible on, on the definitions that's come up in other spheres and other discussions. So I'm glad we've had that conversation here. I don't take any issue, I don't think, uh, either to best available science or to the riparian. Although I do recognize, uh, your point, Chair, about the potential for scope creep. Um, I guess my only kind of lingering question would be, okay, uh, state things it's beneficial, um, based off of what's potentially coming down the pipe uh, to include this language, but let's say we didn't. Does that in any way put the city of Snoqualmie at a disadvantage, or are we, you know, not in compliance in any way? Right now, my understanding is no to, to both of those.
You would be correct. There there's not a penalty or anything in that nature, if that's what you're thinking. Um, what, everything that is submitted for the environment element will be reviewed, um, regionally and then statewide. So if they see something that they, they may speak to us further about in their review, but if you feel uncomfortable with any of these, eh, it doesn't have to be included. This is a recommendation. It's not necessarily, uh, like a specific requirement.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, you know, like you said, Chair, we, we, we felt good about where the language was when we last left this. Um, it seems more than anything we're changing, you know, this to thou, or, you know, and vice versa. So I'm, I'm good either way. I wouldn't hold it up, but, um, I think we were fine with what we had.
Okay, um, can you put, put it back up? It's, it's really bullet four that I'm gonna hang up on. I started it just before it closed. So it's ensure minimal adverse impacts and no net loss of ecological values and functions occur. I, I, I don't have a problem, and this is personal, right? So obviously, it's just part of the commission. Another problem with bullet number one, and I don't have a problem with bullet number two. Um, yeah, I don't have a problem with bullet number three. Um, you know, we, we talked about bullet number five with best available size. I mean, I think that's fine. I think that's just a little bit wiggle room. And then, uh, I don't have a problem with bullet number six. Bullet number four, ensure minimal adverse impacts and no net loss of ecological values. Um, I, I don't know even a clue of how that's defined, and that, that'd be where I'd be concerned about, uh, personally. So that's, uh, again, that's my thought on that. So, um, let me, let me keep going around. So Vice Chair Tesman, are you, are you good?
I'm good, and you know, alternatively, I'd say, uh, we could put a motion to approve all but, uh, but that one line item even.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Kilcup?
I agree. I don't, I, I'm okay with all of the language, but I, I do agree with you, Chair Maruziak, about bullet number four feels like it's opening wide, like we don't know where that's going. Um, so that would be the one, the other things just feel like they're trying to align our language more to what the future language will be, so it, it ties in.
Good. Okay. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I think, um, it's been pretty well stated around the fourth bullet. I, I don't, I don't think I have any other comments or questions this time.
Commissioner Lambert?
I guess I would ask the question of, uh, it's the environmental consultant that's presenting this, right?
No, this is the planning tech. My name's Ashley.
Sorry. Um, wha- what would be the, I guess I would want to know from the consultant, like, what would be the impact of changing this language in the way that they have suggested? Like, I, I mean, they're obviously the experts. I, I, my wife is a hydrologist. If I want to know about hydrology, I ask her. I don't change the language without knowing what the outcome's going to be. So what's, what's, what's going to happen if we change this language? What does it open up to? What does it mean? How does it affect anything in this document?
The suggested edits came from the Department Fish of Wildlife. They looked at what the consultant had, uh, prepared, and then what the planning commission had discussed, and then they added additional comments. And so we've read through those comments and taken some of their advice and built out these comments that you saw in the memo for you to review. Um, if, if that makes sense or answers your questions.
So consultant looked at it, your staff did, is what you're saying.
The comments from the Department Fish of Wildlife was staff reviewed, reviewed.
Yeah. Um, so obviously we can, uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lambert, do you have anything else that you wanted to add?
I'm, I guess I would say that I understand. I guess I just still have the question of um, what, what different impact would these have in the document, other than we're just debating on, on whether or not we like the language, but I don't know what it would end in, or mean in the end.
Well, some of it is updating for more forward-thinking language that will be happening with a lot of different environmental, um, uh, like ordinances and laws and bills that are upcoming. And so some of this also speaks to that, such as there will be a critical area ordinance update. Um, and the Department of Fish and Wildlife is really on top of that. They're very involved in that, and so they foresee some of this, and they're prompting us to stay in momentum with them, for example.
Okay.
Then if we don't make these changes, or then we potentially would be outside of the language that Fish and Wildlife is using in the near future with new ordinances that are coming along right now.
Correct.
That seems problematic.
Yeah, I mean, not to cut off discussion, but just, uh, as a suggestion, um, can we get around all the language? Because repairian, I'm not saying, I'm saying it right. Um, this actually seems like a well-defined term. I was looking at it, and in the other language seems fine. I would just say, take out bullet four, take the other ones. And, and I think we'd have, um, we'd have what we need, and if they want to come back at us with uh, ecological values, um, that I think would really need to define.
Yeah, uh, Chair, I'd just like to, um, reiterate that, you know, these are recommendations. These, this is coming from the state level. They have a, a number of different planners there that are just looking out for the best interests of cities, and so they took the opportunity to purview the work that the planning commission has done. And that particular bullet, bullet number four is also replicated in the critical areas ordinance itself. So it's, there's a, a purpose statement in the, in the, um, development code uh, that, that speaks to no net loss. So, um, I'm just saying that your decision-making and your thought process seems to be spot on.
Okay, um, well, either we need to, the discussion's pointing, Commissioner Lambert's point of, we don't understand the outcomes, is we need just a little bit more data, or um, if, if you want to determine it now, um, I'd say take out four and would probably be okay with the other, take out bullet four with the other bullets. It is, uh, just, just go around, Robert, is you, you okay with that, Vice Chair Tesman?
Yep, no problem, sir.
Commissioner Kilcup?
Yes, that works for me.
Mr. Smith?
Agreed.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yeah, I think I'm fine with that, although I would ask if that language is gonna be in the, the, what is it, critical something or other? Does it need to be in here?
Yeah, what, what's, if we, if we remove bullet four, because we're a little bit not happy with the lack of understanding with it and its open-endedness, um, is there any negative consequences?
No, you can, you can take it out. It's okay. It's just a recommendation. So what I am hearing is that I will send out an updated goals and policies that include these in the memo with the exception of bullet point four. It is being removed. Is that correct?
Yeah, and, um, incorporate repairian, um, that verbiage versus stream buffers in wherever that, wherever that's in the goals. And yeah, we should be fine. And as well as the, the added bullets with wildlife and culverts, I don't, I don't think that's a problem.
Okay, yeah. Any other, um, comments?
Okay, so at this point, I move that we approve the changes, but we remove the bullet four, which speaks of ecological values and include that in our updated environmental plan. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Staff, did we make it hard for you? Is, is that work?
No, that's perfectly fine.
Okay. Okay. Item number three, S B five two nine O. Yes, Community Development Director Ortecci.
Uh, good evening. Um, since this memo was wrote, written, I just wanted to, um, I, I had a, a brief discussion with the Chair of the Planning Commission, Chairman Maruziak, to let him know that, um, this upcoming code amendment relating to, um, consolidating local permit review processes and amending the Snoqualmie Municipal Code is procedural in nature, and procedural, um, code amendments.
And procedural code amendments. Don't fall under the purview of the planning commission, but that being said, we both talked and we both felt like it was informational, maybe helpful for you to know. Where the development code is heading with the way that we permit and how we, the timeframes we permit. Within, so that being said. A number of bills came down over the the last few years, one of them with a very quick timeframe to have our permit timeframes updated by. January first, twenty twenty five, which is just right around the corner. And because of that. Senate Bill fifty two ninety is. Going to require the Snoqualmie Municipal Code to update from a standard hundred and twenty day permitting review timeframe. To shorter timeframes depending on what the permit type is, so less complicated permits that don't require, for example. CIPA or public comment would have a shorter timeframe. And and more complex permits that do have public comment periods and CIPA would have a longer timeframe. And there is a little bit of wiggle room within the suggested permitting timeframes. For each individual city, although this bill lays them out to say, hey, here's what we are recommending, you know, that cities adopt. Cities can can change those timeframes with the the under the purview of a of a city ordinance. With some additional information for why. So. I I don't know if 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 that's brief too brief, but I'm happy to answer any questions, it is very procedural, though.
And the council is going to consider this because it's not in the planning commission purview?
Yeah, it'll go straight to the C D committee with a strikeout and underline, like we would have done here at the planning commission, and then on to city council for consideration and adoption by. January twenty twenty five.
And it just aligns the permitting timelines with.
Yeah.
State.
Yeah.
County.
Yeah, so this, and the other side complicating factor for most cities, not Snoqualmie, is that it also has a certain provision in it that mandates that. Permit fees be. Sent back to the the applicant if your timelines have been superseded, like if you if you if you miss these timeframes and you're not able to process within, for example, the sixty five. Day window for permits that do not require public notice, then you'd give a portion of that of that review fee back. But in in our case, we don't have permit review fees, so it it it's not applicable.
Okay.
Yeah, and then the other ones on here in this memo are a hundred days for permits that do not require public notice and a hundred and seventy days for permits which require public notice and a public hearing. So.
Okay. I think, as informed as I care to be, but I'll.
That's why I say these things, yeah.
For the commission, I'll look for a hand up, any commissioners want to ask, Community Development Director Ratchi, any questions? I see no hands, thank you. Very good. Okay, items of planning commissioner. Interest, it's unfortunate the council member Johnson isn't here, but I'll bring it up. Anyway, I've got two items. That I and I want to tee off, and then I'll go around, Rob, and one is. It came to my attention that on February second, the tribe announced that they were going to begin selling cannabis. And on February twenty sixth, this is on their website. They had indicated that they had already opened positions to go ahead and do that. And I remember years ago. And and I sub, you know, with the kids, I really, for some reason, get a kick out of these kids. And most of them are just, you know, right in the boom of youth, but there's a percentage. That all the way back in middle school that get into drugs and it messes them up badly. So I'm just curious, I'd like to know a little bit more about. That that decision, how it's going to be executed, because it's right here, I mean, it's going to happen right here, is my understanding, right in the casino. So I I don't know what the tribe. Interface is, but I certainly would like to understand. The cannabis plant. Because I remember a number of years ago when I was on E D C, us thinking that we wanted that. You know, as far away from our community as possible when the state was legalized it. That's item one. Item two, I'd like to share, actually. So let me, let me share a screen if I can. Hopefully, I'm not sharing my. If I can find it. I discovered something pretty cool, I think, unless I lost it. Just give me a second here. Okay, let me try this, let me try to share here. Okay, there it is, all right, here we go. Do you guys see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, so this is pretty cool. On the four two five magazine, they talk about this Snoqualmie casinos a year away from opening hotel and other amenities. You know, after being a chunk of the fifteen years when we talked about. The saleish, what we wanted to do, this actually, this actually looks like the specs are very similar. Except we're looking for views of the mountains, and we were looking at views of basically mountains as well, but closer to the falls. So check this out, here's the rendering of it. And this is the the most I've seen of it, actually. If you go down. It gives you what it's going to be, it's going to be two hundred and ten room hotel, entertainment, convention center, destination spa, restaurants, by this time next year. I mean, we we messed around for fifteen years and never ever got it through. A four hundred million dollar project completed by the first quarter twenty twenty five, so it's going to be next year. Two thousand seat entertainment convention center doubling the existing seating capacity. Thirty two thousand square feet. Ten thousand square feet of meeting space, destination spa, anyway, I thought you guys may want to see it, if you haven't seen it, they're definitely looking. To be as high-end as anything, as anything, including doing the smart stuff like have extra parking and fifty four electric vehicle stations. I found that pretty interesting. New slots will add to the seventeen hundred currently in place, casino has sports books, game tables, and they're also going to have an indoor. Swimming pool, which I also find. Very interesting, so again, this looks, this looks very similar to the specs that we were thinking of, although I think we were. They're going to have something, it says, that's going to show the tribe, I think, quite frankly, I thought ours is a little bit more. In your face about the Native American stuff, but anyway, there it is, I thought everybody. Should see this if you haven't seen this already. And it looks like they're going to try, you saw the picture of the hotel, to have views of the Snoqualmie Valley wherever possible. Isn't that interesting?
Oh.
But, did you know the guy?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll tell you what, I will send this link out to. The staff here, so you guys can peruse it at your leisure, but I thought everybody had to take a look at that. Because I was just like, you know. Four hundred million dollars, what's going to happen? And they they actually put it out. Very loud and clear, we don't have a whole lot of visibility to it, so I thought that was kind of good that at least we got to see that, so I'll give you guys the link. And if we pass that out to the commissioners, that'd be good. Okay, let me stop sharing. Let you guys edit, hopefully you found that useful. We go around the. Commissioners here, Vice Chair Tesman?
No, no interest points for me this this week.
Okay, Commissioner Kilco?
No additional items for me.
All right, Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, think of anything for this week.
Mr. Lambert?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Okay. Then let's move to item four, the future agenda list.
Alrighty. Sorry, this new mic is difficult to deal with. So as you can see, the upcoming, we will be delving back into the emergency housing. And then. This is subject to change due to new. Information since the packet was published, which that is now reflected in the work program that. I was hoping to show you guys if that's okay.
So all that emergency house is sliding right, right, because it starts on March fourth, which was two weeks ago.
Yeah, so.
Sliding to the right.
So that was an introduction, and then we had to have a posting. For it and.
Is there going to be a public?
There will be a public hearing.
Okay, Community Development Director?
Sorry for that.
Okay.
But yeah, so the next meeting, the emergency housing will be coming back. And then we will be having a public hearing. On it as well.
Okay.
And. I have not been able to confirm yet, staff was out. On. Was out, but we are hoping to get. Someone from Parks and Public Works to come out and talk about the River Trail design, I know that was of an interest. Earlier, and so there's been updates to the project, and so we're hoping that the project manager could come out and discuss more with that, I. Will have to confirm whether or not they are available for the April meeting, but I did pencil it in for that time.
Okay, and one of the city staff mentioned that. The tribe had some concerns of where that was going, have we cleared that up, or is that still an open issue?
I am not sure, and hopefully that's something that they would be able to. Elaborate further, the actual project manager.
Yeah, give give a heads up, because I think that was.
Okay, yeah.
Going in one area that the tribe had concerns about, so I just, let's let's make sure that. That is addressed.
Okay.
Okay.
And as for the work plan, that's the next thing. So this has seen some updates, given the. Recent development that we have received the contract. For a climate change grant, so the code amendment for. The critical areas ordinance and the FEMA flood improvement permits, as well as the climate change element have. Now been moved on to the twenty twenty four work program since they have funding. So those will be. Items of interest coming up.
Okay, any comments from the commission, I'll look for a hand? Not seen any? Okay. And the Snoqualmie Mill design standards, you have that T V D, what's what's going on with that?
What would you say, economics?
Ah, okay. So as far as. What's approved, it's just. Kind of took, it's waiting for a COVID recovery and the whole thing to, it's not penciling out right now, is that what's going on?
I wouldn't say it's not penciling out, I think I think they've made progress with design standards. But they, they're not ready to share those with us.
They've been the developer.
Yeah, the development, yeah, and I I just don't get the feeling that they're going to be coming forward this year, maybe next year. Maybe at the end of this year, but this, you know, work program is a bit of a work in progress, so if we get word that they will need to add it to the, you know, the calendar and and fit it in, you know, we'll make those adjustments.
You're just talking about, I first heard about the Snoqualmie Mill development. In twenty fifteen, so and it was penciled in then, so, okay, okay. I will, we'll be patient. And it might have been going on way before twenty fifteen, okay?
Well, these are just the design standards, they're outlined in the development agreement that they'll come forward with.
Okay. Fair enough. Anything else? All right, any other comments from the commissioners? Give her in. I don't see any hands, okay, at this point. I move we adjourn the meeting at. Seven forty seven P M, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you, thank you, quick meeting, meeting is adjourned.